All right, it is seven o'clock. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman, Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hayson.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of July 9th.
I'll second.
I first need a motion.
Sorry, in a bit of a hurry.
I move approval.
I'll second that move of approval.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Any discussion, corrections? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Are there any additions to the agenda? Nope, saying none. It is time for public input. We have one card here who would like to speak during public input. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak at this time? All right, I believe the mayor would like to do a presentation.
Yes, I'd like to ask Chris Francisco and Don Ho to join me. Come on up here. You gotta be where you can get pictures, a photograph. I want to recognize the excellent work of our finance department. I want to award a certificate of achievement, we've received, they've received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's for the comprehensive annual financial report called the CAFER. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. It's also a reflection of the excellent management of Finance Director Elizabeth Hannett. So, Chris Francisco serves as our financial services manager. Don Ho is our financial analyst. Sophie Pham couldn't be here tonight, she's our city accountant. All three have contributed to this recognition, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for your very, very hard work. And this was done at the same time we were implementing an entirely new financial system in the city, which has been an enormous, enormous task. We're still not quite done, but almost, and it's gone very, very well. So, thank you again on behalf of the City of Urbana. Thank you very much. Thanks.
All right, first on the agenda is a presentation, but I dot, however, before Melissa comes up, I believe Mr. Cruz would like to speak, is that correct? He'd like to speak before? Okay, please, come up.
Before I begin, I assume you have in your pack at the dashboard report, if you have the chance, just to pull that up real quick, I'm going to reference a couple of charts and speak to them, and it might be helpful to have that handy. Good evening. For the sake of discussion tonight, I'm going to make several assumptions. The Urbana Police Department officers are recording traffic stop data accurately, they are not intentionally profiling African-American drivers, and all traffic stops are being legally conducted. If you accept these assumptions as true, the dashboard report you're about to hear from the Urbana Police Department then speaks loudly and clearly. We know for a fact that African-American racial disparities are embedded in all three motivations of a stop: traffic issues, community caretaking, and targeted patrol. The disparity is pervasive, it resides in every motivation for a stop. One must ask why and how this is happening. So first on page six of the dashboard report, it's important to note that the charts labeled number of stops and percent of step stops show that during the past six months, the number of overall stops has decreased compared to the five-year average, while the number of step stops has increased as proportion of all stops. Since step stops have a lower disparity racial than non-step stops, this overall decline that you see may simply be a result of this dynamic, and not with any substantive changes implemented by the Urbana Police Department. Also, on a side note, it would be extremely helpful to track this dynamic in future dashboard reports by including a breakout of racial disparity racials for both step stops and non-step stops is a part of chart four, racial disparities in traffic stops, found on page seven. I hope you'll request this of the UPD. Looking at chart two on page six, motivation of stops shows that nearly 97% of all traffic stops were motivated by a traffic or community caretaking issue. Think about that for a moment. 97% of all stops involve typical moving and caretaking violations, such as speeding, missing a stop sign, a taillight out, et cetera, et cetera. There's no research evidence that drivers of various racial groups differ in their driving skills or behaviors. All things being equal, one can reasonably assume that these two motivations of stops would result in minimal racial disparity if enforcement was both fair and equitable. But in fact, the bulk of the racial disparity does reside in these two motivation stops. Why? The answer seems rather straightforward. The African-American community is simply being policed differently than other races in Urbana. Beat officers have to be spending a disproportionate amount of their time policing African-American neighborhoods and streets as compared to other neighborhoods and streets. In short, the UPD is over-pleasing African-American communities and drivers, especially in regards to traffic law enforcement beyond what is potentially reasonable, necessary, and justifiable. Over-pleasing is a product of decades of implicit and systemic racial bias that over time becomes normalized. It is driven not solely by methods of effective policing, but also misbeliefs and myths that have historically plagued the criminal justice system. The point is that local traffic enforcement may be legal, but it most certainly has not been equitable. That is the root cause of our traffic stop racial disparity. I hope it is clear that if this disparity is ever to be eliminated, a fundamental shift in how the UPD enforces traffic laws must occur. Traffic law enforcement must not be dictated by race, neighborhoods, crime rates, myths, or misconceptions of criminality, but rather by accident rates and maintaining street safety equitably through the entire city. A paradigm shift, a conscious effort of more uniform and equitable enforcement of traffic laws is required. Until this is done, the disparity will persist, and its negative impact on the African community and police-community relations will continue. The city council has a responsibility to everyone in our community to require the UPD not only to enforce traffic laws legally and fairly, but also equitably. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, Melissa?
I just wanted to kick this off tonight with a big thank you to Melissa Haynes, who does all this hard work to prepare the analysis on traffic stops in Urbana. I think based on past experience with her presentations, you can see how not only professional she is, but how thoughtful she is in trying to help us all understand the information from all perspectives. So, tonight, I think you'll see that we're making some progress, and so I'll turn it over to Melissa, and then I'll close it out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this update is for quarter one and quarter two of 2018, so from January 1 through June 30th of this year. When we're doing the comparisons to control for seasonality, we're looking at the past five years, the same time period, so January to June.
Could you pull the microphone a little closer?
Absolutely, thank you. Is this better? Okay. For January to June, for the past five years. So, we'll do a, we'll look at what's happened the last six months, and then we'll do a comparison to the last five years, and see if those results are within or outside of the range that we would expect. So, this is the, we'll do, walk through the number of stops, motivation for stops, reasons, racial disparities, and then the outcome of traffic stops. So, for the first six months of 2018, UPD conducted 1,550 traffic stops. This, the five-year average for the first two quarters was nearly 1,800, with a standard deviation, over the past five years of 217. The number of traffic stops that we did this six months was significantly lower than we would expect, more than one standard deviation away from the mean. So, we conducted fewer traffic stops than we would expect based on the average range that we had seen over the past five years. We conduct traffic stops all over the city. This is the density map of all traffic stops that UPD has conducted in the last six months. You can see that they cluster mainly on some main thoroughfares. So, we do step stops as well. Those are broken, we break the stops into the Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program stops, and then the stops that are conducted during officers' regular shifts. The step stops are slightly higher this time, and part of that can be explained by the distracted driving grant that we had. Those were counted as step stops because it was set locations, officers were working overtime details during that time, and they were looking for specific violations. So, our overall, this, this year, we, about 40% of our stops were step stops compared to the five-year average of 28.28%. That is outside of one standard deviation, so it's higher than we would expect based on, on what we've done in the past. Looking at the density of step stops and non-step stops, step stops are concentrated, as we would expect, on, on main thoroughfares. These are targeted locations that are pre-selected by a sergeant. Non-step stops show more, it's more spread out throughout the city. Looking at the motivation for stop, this follows what we would expect based on more of our stops being step stops. Step stops are always for traffic issues, most of the time, for traffic issues. So, very nearly 90% of our stops this, this year have been for traffic issues. 10% have been for community caretaking, and about 2% for targeted patrol. There's not a comparison to the five-year average because we just started collecting this data in 2016, so the quarter one and quarter two is just for 2016 and 2017, and we can't draw meaningful conclusions from that, so that's just a straight-up comparison to, two years to the last one year. Looking at the reason for stop, for the, for this year, we've done about 75% for moving violations, also to be expected because we've done more step stops. Equipment violations were, were down significantly, so about 1.75 standard deviations below the mean. I will note that we should expect this to go up, because we've recently started doing the voucher program. We've, we typically do about 40, 40 to 50 equipment violations a month. So far, we've issued 70 vouchers, so looking forward to the, to the next update, we will expect that number to be a little bit higher. Looking at the disparity ratios, our, the red line would indicate that the drivers of that race would be equally as likely as we would expect based on the driving population. We do an estimate of the driving population based on the number, the racial breakdown of drivers involved in traffic accidents within the City of Urbana to get kind of a proxy measure of the racial breakdown of drivers that are on, on city streets. As we've seen in the past, African-American drivers are more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on the driving population. In quarter one and quarter two of 2018, the disparity ratio is 1.41. That means an African-American driver is 41% more likely than we would expect to be stopped based on that driving population. What we had seen for the past five years, the average of that was 1.59, so 59% more likely to be stopped. This is one and a half standard deviations below the mean, so this is outside what we would expect to see based on the numbers that we had seen in the past. For quarter one and quarter two, we made 431 stops where an African-American was the driver of the vehicle compared to our average of 553. The disparity ratio for Asian drivers increase, or decreased from 1.07 to .92. That is also outside of what we would expect. I will note that the number of traffic stops that we do for Asian drivers that, that involve Asian drivers or Hispanic drivers are relatively low. For the first six months, we conducted 135 stops of Asian drivers and 70 stops of Hispanic drivers, so a small fluctuation in that can, can cause a big fluctuation in, in the, in the overall numbers. Caucasian drivers, our five-year average would be .85, which means a Caucasian driver is 15% less likely to be stopped than we would expect based on the driving population. This year, that number increased to .91, so a Caucasian driver is still less likely to be stopped by 9%, but that number went from .85 to .91, and that is outside of what we would, that is, it has, it's a meaningful increase from what we would expect based on past year's variation. Looking at the outcomes of traffic stops, 50, very nearly 60% of the stops that we've done this year have resulted in a citation. 37% have resulted in the most serious thing being a warning, and 3% of our stops resulted in something more serious than, than a traffic stop. Looking at the disparity ratios, this is going to be on the next slide, and it's on the second table here. An African-American driver, on average, and for the past five years, was about 7% less likely to receive a citation than we would expect based on the percentage of drivers that we stop. So, this takes out the proxy, because we know the race of the drivers that we stop. So, looking at the overall breakdown of stops, we would expect if we stop 25% African-American drivers, then African-American drivers would make up 25% of the citations that we write. So, this is, this is a more concrete disparity ratio than what we're able to do with the, with the reason, or with the stop itself. So, in quarter one and quarter two of 2018, that number was reduced to .87, so an African-American driver was 13% less likely than we would expect to receive a citation, and that is a meaningful difference. A Caucasian driver, on average, had been 3% more likely, so pretty much on, on par to receive a citation, but that number had fluctuated so little in the past, the standard deviation was .02. It increased to 1.06, and that is a meaningful difference. So, a Caucasian driver is 6% more likely to receive a citation than we would expect based on the percentage of, of the racial breakdown of drivers that we stop. Similarly, so the, the more serious outcomes, we can talk about this, but it's, it's a very small number of stops, so just keep that in mind. There were 30 stops involving African-American drivers that resulted in something more serious than a, than a traffic citation or warning, 15 Caucasian drivers and two Hispanic drivers. An African-American driver was 130% more likely to have something resulting more serious than a traffic violation, and a Caucasian driver was 50% less likely this year. Both of those are outside of the range that we would expect, but those numbers, again, are so small that a small fluctuation, and that results in a, in a large, in a large Z-score. And then looking at the warnings, African-Americans for the last five years had an average of receiving, being 2% less likely to receive a warning than we would expect. And for this year, it's 10% more likely to receive a warning than we would expect, and that is a meaningful difference. Caucasian drivers, for the last five years, on average, had been 1% more likely to receive a warning, and for this year, it's 5% less likely. And because the, that number has fluctuated so little in the past, that is a meaningful So, overall, this year, we've seen fewer traffic stops, more of our traffic stops have been step, that we've conducted, because of that, a higher percentage of stops have involved moving violations and a lower percentage of equipment violations. We expect that to change with the voucher program that we're doing right now. There's been a lower racial disparity of stops for African-American and Asian drivers, and a higher racial disparity for stops of Caucasian drivers. Lower racial disparity has been seen in citations issued for African-American drivers and higher for Caucasian drivers, and then there's a higher racial disparity in warnings issued for African-American drivers and lower racial disparity for Caucasian drivers.
Thank you, and, and we'll answer questions in just a minute. I, I wanted to let you know that the next update you'll receive will be the annual update in February. We've committed Melissa's time to working on a grant that she can explain to you, it's a National Justice Institute.
Yeah, National Institute of Justice. I did a presentation on it to you all not, not too long ago. We're getting ready to kick off the survey, so we've got, we've got a lot of moving parts with it right now.
And then, as you can imagine, her time is very much in demand, and I've asked for some of her time as well to work on some analysis that will help us hopefully focus some of our energies around gun violence. So, she's, her, her time is oversubscribed, and so we'll need to make the next update in six months. Happy to talk more about that. Thank you.
Questions? Bill?
Yeah, thanks on the percent, or on the step stops in general. I know we've looked at disparity just among step stops before, like Doro was talking about, and it seemed like for the five-year average, it tended to be pretty low, but it also varied quite a bit depending on where we had our step locations. I think one of your quarterly updates, it was actually higher. So, did you look at the disparity for this six-month period in step stops by itself?
Yeah, so traditionally, what we've, what we've seen with the step stops, the step-stop disparity had been staying pretty close to one. A couple of years ago, that changed. The disparity ratio had actually continued to rise for African-American drivers in step stops. We took a hard look at where we were doing the step stops, where we were conducting them, and basing that on where accidents were occurring and where accidents with, with injuries were occurring, and so we were able to more, make more informed decisions about where those step stops should be located based on traffic safety. For the last six months, the disparity ratio for step stop for African-American drivers was .92. For Caucasian drivers, it's 1.11.
So, if, if you took that disparity ratio and, and used the breakdown of traffic issue, community caretaking, targeted patrol, or I guess you could also calculate disparity ratio for each of those, is there a way to predict how much of our decrease from 1.59 to 1.41 was the result of the shift in more traffic issue stops?
That is not a number that I have previously calculated. I could probably do it, but not freehand.
Okay. And then, could you remind me, on the more serious outcome, does that include suspended revoked license stops?
If it's a revoked license, it will. If it's a suspended license, in most cases, it will not. It will include DUI cases, though, and anything with a warrant.
And a warrant, okay. Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in looking a little bit more at the disparity ratios by motivation for stop and see how much of our decrease was due to just the, the different makeup of motivations.
And that's, I think I did, I broke down the motivation for stop in the annual report, so I expect I'll, I'll continue to do that again, so we can kind of compare it year to year. So, that should, that'll be in the annual.
And one more thing, I know other people may have questions on this, but just if you could, before we end tonight, if you could give us an update on what you've looked at in the pedestrian stops. I know they just released the second year, the full year of pedestrian stops for the state, so we have two full years. Just if you've looked at that, and if there's anything you can tell us about how it might be useful to us.
I've looked a little bit at the pedestrian stops. I haven't done a full workup, I haven't done a full report. After the 2016 data was released, we, we took a closer look and tried to figure out, looking at some of the free text fields and the, the reason that some of these were being reported to the state, it's reported if there's an arrest, if there's a citation, if there's a pat-down, or if there's a search. Most of our searches or pat-downs involved, it was an administrative reason, so if, if the officer were to give someone a ride, or if the officer were to question someone inside their car before anyone is able to get in the car, the officer is procedurally required and for safety purposes to do a pat-down. So, that was a box that we added, so now I can, I can track that and pull those out separately. And then just a cursory, we collect information on the reason for the stop. Most of the reasons that we, we initiate a pedestrian stop are due to reactive things. So, we're looking at responses to calls for service, we're looking at matching the description of a victim, or matching the witness description of, of the suspect. And I believe that there's another one, I'm not, not prepared to answer in-depth questions.
In the area of a crime that was just committed. So, around 85% of the pedestrian stops are for those reasons alone, so basically, you know, in layman's term, for the reactionary stopping of people versus a traffic stop, which is more of a proactive type of thing that we do.
Okay, thanks, and I guess I don't want to get into a real big discussion on pedestrian stops, but I would like to talk about it at some points. I don't know if your time is already scheduled, or how we go, how we're going to do that, but...
I think the way I'd like to handle that is, Melissa has, as I said, she's oversubscribed, and she has a work, a very full work plan. We can talk about when we might have capacity to do that, but it's not going to be anytime soon. But I think, you know, we're continuing to collect information, and when the time is right, we'll be happy to share that with you. We just can't undertake that right now.
Okay. I mean, if we don't do it, I'm sure other people will, so...
I will also note that we are pushing all of that data to the open data portal now, so it is, it is publicly available to, to do any kind of analysis, and kind of even the reportable and the non-reportable are both, both being pushed, so it can, it's in the public sphere.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron?
Yeah, so thank you for the presentation, Melissa. My understanding is that the open data portal is not exactly what we wanted to be as far as being able to monitor that data and that, those pedestrian stops, but I guess we could talk about that a little bit more, we could have a meeting or something to talk about that. So, Carol, I'm not quite understanding, are you saying that you're requesting a move to go from four, a quarterly report to a six-month report back? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, at least for the next six months, because Melissa's, we, we made this commitment to participate in this grant, and we'd like to use some of her time in a way that's not currently being used, which is to do some analysis that can help us potentially redeploy other city resources into the effort around gun violence that maybe we haven't been thinking about up to this point, and we need the skills of her, her analytical skills to help us do that.
So, part of the work before you arrived was to bring Melissa on as a statistician to help us make sure we wrap our heads around the traffic stop data and the disparity that it has resulted in, in the African-American community for, for years. And we're not finished with that, so what I'm hearing you say that you want to, to take her energies or her focus someplace else, outside of that?
Well, I guess I didn't realize that it was for that narrow purpose.
I mean, I could be, you know, I don't think it was just for that reason.
Oh, okay.
Right, but certainly the, the task force and a lot of the work that the council had put forth around this issue, a lot of people weren't uncomfortable with the census data, and so they wanted a real statistician to come in and bring forth an analysis that they could agree with or accept.
Yes.
And she's come forth and been doing that work. So, at this particular point, what the report that we just got is that African-Americans are still 41% more likely to be stopped than we should be, and there's some concern about pedestrian stops, but you're saying that her time is going to be diverted elsewhere?
It's going to be used in, in, I mean, first of all, her skills, as you said, to bring somebody in who people could have some confidence in. Her skills are tremendously valuable to the city, and as a result of that, there are many demands for her time, and it's all in service of promoting, you know, a safe, equitable delivery of services to people. The, so I'm, I'm, I know we're not done with this effort, and I don't mean to suggest that we are done. There are many different, there are many different analyses that we There are many different, there are many different analyses that we could do around racial disparity, and some of, some of that, I think, is potentially contributing to other things like gun violence, or like, you know, just, just, there's so many, what I want to say, unbalanced outcomes in the African American community around health, around economic, around economics, jobs, incarceration rates, educational attainment, all these things. So we'd like to take some time to look at beyond this one metric, and her skills can be really useful to that. So we're trying to broaden the conversation, and then, because gun violence has become such an acute problem, see if we can, with that information about how we might be deploying our resources in a way that also has a racial disparity associated with it, how can we rethink that and maybe move the needle on gun violence? And I'm not saying that we have some kind of, you know, magic bullet that's going to fix it, but that it's a, it's a conversation I think we need to make room for. This, this effort has been, I think, really good at getting people sensitive to some of the issues that we're, that, that the African American community is experiencing, but I, I don't want the conversation to just be so focused on this that we're missing a much bigger picture. So that's how we're trying to use this incredibly valuable resource we have in Melissa Haynes.
Well, I appreciate the much more thorough, you know, sort of understanding or explanation of what that's about. So that was helpful, thank you. I appreciate that. So the question I had, Melissa, was about the, it was a statement in the report. It says, "This information can be queried and extracted using the program DB2 by the stop, by the violation, or by the person unless otherwise noted, the unit of analysis of the traffic stop." What, what does that mean? Right?
So I was just trying to do a thorough methodology of how the data is stored, how I query the data, how I pull the data out from the system. So every time a ticket is written, it's written down on a piece of paper, the, the service representatives enter that information into the computer system. There are some that state internally, there's, and then there's a bit of it that gets sent to the, the Department of Transportation, and so just showing the vast amount of work that goes into that, and then how I'm able to pull it out. We, when we stop someone, if there's a stop that involves a DUI, and someone doesn't have insurance, and someone has their car towed, that's three entries, so that, that's, that outcome, or that, that person will show up three times. So showing that I'm only counting that one stop one time is, is what that means. The unit of analysis is the stop, not the charge.
Okay, that, that's, that's clear. I think I got about a third of it understood, and DB2?
It's just a computer software program that we use.
Oh, all right. So just for the sake of understanding, also, there was something in the report, and it reads as follows, "The above is an example of a purely pretextual stop, which would be objectively defined as a targeted patrol. However, not all pretextual stops are so clear, so it's possible that pretextual stops may be marked as community caretaking or traffic issues and not targeted patrol. In either case, if the officer questioned the driver beyond the scope of the traffic stop, regardless of the motivation, UPD officers now indicate this on the ticket." So this, he says this data is still in the pilot phase. So for the purpose of understanding a nuanced difference between targeted patrol and pretextual stops, in the case that you described, that you put in a report, was the officer sitting somewhere, or were they driving and they saw an erratic behavior and then they engaged the other driver?
So the, the example that's in the report is a, is a, is an example where a driver, where an officer noticed erratic behavior, initiated a traffic stop because they suspected criminal behavior was occurring, where the driver was driving under the influence. That was the motivation for the stop. The reason for the stop was the, the moving violation or swerving over the road. I'm not sure if the officer was sitting or if the officer was driving. It was not a step stop, so the officer was, was on their patrol shift.
So that's what I was trying to tease out. Was it a step stop, I guess, was the person, the officer sitting, looking for violations, or was the officer doing their normal beat?
It was, yeah, it was beat work.
Okay. So, and if the officer had been sitting someplace during a targeted patrol, so to speak, then it would have been listed, not targeted patrol, but step, stop.
Step, yeah.
Yes. Then that would have been listed under step?
Yeah.
Okay. Regardless of all of the criminal activity and all this stuff?
It would have been listed under step, but then the motive, so that there's so many different ways that we track this, and so a step stop is where, where an officer is assigned to a specific spot, looking for a specific driving behavior. If they see egregious driving behavior that's outside of what it is that they're looking for, they would initiate a stop, and that would be a pretextual, or the, the targeted patrol stop.
So if there is an actual, if we do a DUI step, though, that is one particular step, the, the only one I can think of where there isn't a specific location. It is you're out, usually during the hours of bar closing, and you're looking for people that are driving under the influence, and it can be anywhere in the city. That is the one type of step assignment. That is not a specific location where you sit and look for speeders or people violating stop signs and that, that sort of thing. So we don't do a lot of those, but, but that would be one variation, and again, it just shows the many different variables there are in tracking this and how, how it's done. So it's just kind of, some of that is kind of confusing.
So, and if I understand correctly, the step stops, which are the smallest number of stops in comparison to community caretaking and targeted patrol?
But...
No, I just want to...
So the...
Okay, there's a...
Okay.
Go ahead.
We're quantifying qualitative information, right? So that we've conducted 1,500 traffic stops, and you want to put each one of these into a little box. So you, you got this stop, and then you ask, was it a step or was it a non-step? Was it, what was the reason for your stop? What was the motivation for your stop? And so you're answering questions for all of these different variables. A step stop is where an officer is working overtime, and they're looking for a specific violation in a specific place. That's different from a targeted patrol stop where an officer initiates a stop for a valid legal reason, a violation of the Illinois Vehicle Code with the intention of investigating something that may be more serious than that. That is the smallest number of, of stops that we conduct, about 2%, I believe, of the last...
And that was targeted patrol?
Targeted patrol, yeah. Yeah, 2% of 1,500, so...
Okay. I was, all right, so my understanding was that what we did with the grant, with the distracted driving and stuff like that, was that we found when just looking for vehicle violations on a step patrol, for instance, we found that the disparity was, basically it was what it was, it should be for each ethnic group. Am I, is that correct?
For, for all step stops. I didn't do the breakdown for the distracted driving grant versus the regular step.
But, but for regular step?
Yeah, for overall step, we were, we are now, we've had the ability now with the mapping software and, and looking more closely at where are the concentration of accidents are and where the concentration of serious accidents are. That's where we're doing the step stops now. The step stops now have a disparity ratio of .92, so much closer to one than, than what we've seen in the past.
So even after the, so the step stops are contributing to some degree. What that degree is, I don't want to try to say at this particular point, but going from 59% more likely to be stopped to 41% more likely to be stopped, you're saying that it's logical to conclude that the step stops, the increase with a more targeted using the mapping software, has decreased that number? Is that fair to say?
That's a fair assumption, yes.
Okay. So, moving outside of those step stops, now we're talking about two other different types of stops where we still have a disparity, right? So...
One other different, just, just the, so it's, it's step versus non-step. Step versus patrol.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
Going into non-step.
So many categories, I know.
All right, all right. Go, go ahead, Chief.
No, no, I was just getting ready to answer whatever question you're going to ask, because I have a feeling it's going to be my answer.
Oh, boy. All right. You want a tomato?
I already had one, thank you. They were very good.
So, the question still remains, as we still deal with the disparity. If that doesn't solve it, then why are we still seeing the disparity in those other places? Right, in the non-step stops?
So your question is, why is there still a disparity in non-step stops?
Well, because, and contextually, what I'm saying is that I thought we had a, I mean, we've been doing some work around this for a while now, and we had the, the step details that we felt like would help even it out a little bit, but we're still seeing a significantly high number of stops for, for African Americans, higher than where we should be stopped. So has, from all the time we've spent, all the data we've looked at, and all the conversations we've had, is there something else that's emerging that is going to help us decrease that number?
It's something that we are actively working on, and we have been since January, and this isn't something that's going to happen overnight anymore than, you know, actually erasing implicit bias, for instance. It's something that we are working on, and I think we've made some headway in, in, in some of what we're trying to accomplish here, and so the overall disparity ratio is down, and, and we're continuing to work on the non-step disparity ratio.
So as we have these, this, this conversation, and certainly I can see the 59 to 41, we're going in the right direction, right? But to make an analogy so that it's crystal clear for all of us, right? A right that, for instance, African Americans fall for having the right to vote, if we say that we went from 59% not being able to vote to only 41% not being able to vote, we're still being denied a basic right that we're supposed to have. So from 59 to 41, still, there's a sense of urgency, right, to still address this concern because of the impact that it has on the African American community, and I think the community as a whole, as it relates to police community relations, and the economic impact that it has on the African American community. So I, I just want to make sure that while I appreciate a move in the right direction, the urgency of this is still very real, and I believe it is my job to make sure that I don't allow it to just become a, you know, we're, we're getting there, all deliberate speed type of conversation, and I'm not trying to project on you, Chief, that that's what you're saying. I'm having an open conversation, you just happen to be in the seat right there, right? But the importance of us making sure that we continue to work on this is extremely important to us, and I think it should be extremely important to all of us, to make sure that we make it a priority, continue to make it a priority.
Right, I understand, and I, I would like to say that, as I've been thinking and dealing with those, this over the past few months, that I've come to the realization that, much like I already kind of alluded, like, this is much like an implicit bias thing, and it is something that we didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get out of it overnight, and I'm not saying that to make an excuse, I'm just trying to, and I think I've, I've done, I've done some explaining and trying to illustrate like how police work works and that, you know, the lieutenant doesn't tell the officer what streets to drive down and those sorts of things. They patrol areas where there's high crime, and if they see violations, they stop people, and the, the message is that we need to have a purpose behind what we're doing. What is your purpose? Are we stopping someone just for an equipment violation? Well, I think we might be now, actually, trying to give out vouchers, but before that, are you doing it just to do it? Or did you do it because the, you know, the vehicle just left a hotel where we've had a bunch of heroin overdoses? You know, what is your purpose behind making the traffic stop? And trying to change the way people think, officers think, and how they do their job because we didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get out of it overnight, and I'm not going to be able to change those things overnight or in six months? So it is something we're working on, trying to have meaningful conversations with the officers, and in general, trying to change and sway how we do our job.
So Chief, I just want to say thank you. All right? I really, really do sincerely appreciate what you just said. I heard it very loud and clear, whether somebody else may have heard it or not, I did, and I thank you for that, because I think we have room to grow and develop when there's an acknowledgement, right? It is the refusal sometimes, or the resistance to that acknowledgement, that causes much of the strife and the tension. So I heard you loud and clear, and I thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Could I, could I just add one more, one more thought to it, which is, not to detract from the fine comments of Chief Morgan. You know, the nature of this metric is such that it is, it is, because the metric is being generated by the police department, it's as if all the, all of the burden of what it, what it means is borne by the police department. And I think one of the things that was illustrative from overlaying where the, where the stops were taking place to where crimes are taking place, is that there is a much bigger issue here, which is a societal issue, which is unfortunately being put on the shoulders of the police as the, that they must solve this problem, and, you know, I think we need as a community to take ownership of it ourselves and not just lay it on the shoulders of the police. So that's what some of these broader efforts are about. It's, again, it's going to be a long road, but we have to do it, you know, in partnership and, and with a, with a sense that we're coming together with, with goodwill and not animus.
Thank you.
All right. Eric?
So I have just two questions. One is, as we look at the decline in the total number of stops, does that reflect, is that also tracking a decline in the number of accidents? Are people actually driving more safely?
In 2017, that was not the case. There were, there were significantly more accidents than we had had in the past. Haven't run it yet for 2018, but I would hope that with our more focused step stops that we would have seen a reduction in that.
And my second question is, would it be, I, I hate to even ask for anything more than you're already doing, but would it be feasible to add age and gender demographics to the data? Because we do know that those are significant determinants of driving safety.
So I've played a little bit with the age. It, depending on how we break down the classification, so looking at like the National Highway Safety Traffic, whatever, they, they break it down in really small categories, and that's how I did it initially, and that wasn't very good, so I'm going to need to do it again. But looking at it broadly, younger African Americans are more likely to be stopped, and that number decreases as the age increases. Older Caucasians are more likely to be stopped, and that de, that, younger Caucasians are less likely to be stopped, older Caucasians are more likely to be stopped. When I factor in accidents, some of that is, goes lower. So we, older Caucasians are also more likely to be involved in traffic accidents, so trying to, to overlay and figure out how I can, I'm going to have to use a larger pool of data and larger categories of numbers, and that's like a side thing that I'm...
So, so I didn't ask a simple question. It sounded simple to me, but I, I guess there are complexities that I hadn't realized.
Right, so I can't, I can't just do it and just look at the age breakdown. I also have to look at the age breakdown of drivers involved in traffic accidents, because I need to be able to control for not just the racial breakdown, because we have, different ages are, are driving at different rates across, across racial breakdowns, so...
That's interesting, because, I mean, the national data, but I guess it's because the sample size is so big, they look pretty clean, that, you know, young males are terrible drivers and have lots and lots of terrible accidents, and then when males get to, when people get to be my age, they start to have more accidents, too. But it, our local is probably more complicated.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit different. Yeah, so that's, that's on my list, but it's a long list.
Jared, did you have a question?
I did.
Go for it.
Melissa, thanks for all your efforts, Chief, and wonderful new city administrator. I just had a question about this report generation. Obviously, between the scope of our last quarterly report, this quarterly report, analyzing this data is not the only thing you worked on.
Yes.
And Carol, you believe that it takes up enough of her time that she's not going to have enough of it to generate another quarterly report moving forward?
That's what I believe, and she can, she can tell you herself.
Yeah, so about 25 hours of my week right now is, is on the grant. The National Institute of Justice is paying for that time. I'm working some overtime to make sure that I'm able to still keep up with the things that I'm doing. I, I do work for, for UPD, doing the... I do work for UPD, doing the mapping and doing kind of the targeted patrol stuff. I run things for different apartment complexes to kind of monitor where some of our problem areas are and how we can kind of stay ahead of some of those things. I run the countywide crisis intervention, where law enforcement interact with individuals that are experiencing or displaying signs of mental illness or mental crises across all agencies. I have, I have a lot of standing projects, and then I have a lot of things that I get requested to do on an ad hoc basis. So it's, it's overwhelming, and I've missed a lot of deadlines.
I can, I can only imagine. Well, and that's why I'm bringing it up, because I understand workflow interruption. And if you have a system that you're working right now, and a quarterly report keeps you busy enough that taking away from it means it goes away, then when, now you're going to be stuck with twice as much data, pushing it to us by an annual report, right when you've gotten into the thick of now starting this study and your work on the study, I'm concerned about whether or not you're going to be able to catch back up with all, with all of that.
The annual report has a bit more detail than just the, just the quarterly dashboard. So the annual report's going to take me a significant amount of time regardless. It's not, the annual report isn't an update of the quarterly. The annual report is a whole different ballgame.
Right.
That takes a significant amount of time to, I think it was, what, 40 pages? I don't remember. It's, that one's significant.
You don't see just shift in work becoming a problem for you, being able to keep up with all of the work you have to do in the interim to make sure that we're staying on top of this?
So I usually do that in February. That gives me six to eight weeks of, after all of the traffic stops are entered, to be able to do that. Is, I think that that's, you know, knowing that that's coming up and knowing that that's going to be after we've done all of the data collection for the grant, and we'll be into kind of the analysis side, and we have people that are going to be helping with that. I think it's going to be, I'll be able to do the annual.
And the, the data still comes in regardless?
Yeah, the data comes in, the data's entered into the system, the data is pushed to the open data portal. Yeah, we, we collect the data, and the data is entered by the service representatives, and then the data gets pushed to IDOT as well.
Okay, I probably don't need to get into this much detail, and perhaps we can have a separate chat. I just want to express that my concern about making sure that you're not pulled in so many different directions that when February comes around, we're hearing stories about how we need to delay the annual report because Melissa hasn't had time to keep up with it, because she's doing all these other things. Not that I don't think that they're meaningful, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know if it's appropriate now, or other council members have questions, but could we talk a little bit about that grant once more?
Sure.
As far as what your scope of work is for that grant?
Yeah, right now, I'm, I was supervising four interns. I have three right now that are actively working here at UPD on the grant. We are, we've just submitted the final institutional review board packet involving all three scopes of work. So there's the quantitative survey, there's the qualitative interviews and focus groups, and then there's the crime data. We've submitted, packaged all of that up and submitted it to, it's been approved by the U of I in Champaign and Chicago, and we've just submitted it to the National Institute of Justice, to their Human Subjects Protections Officer. Before we're able to start on the surveys, they have to approve that. The survey is going to be intense, as you know. Yeah, so that's, that's going to be my next two months, trying to make sure that we're on top of, of all of that. Yeah, so we're, I have the semi-annual update, progress report update that's due to NIJ on the 31st. So that'll be my entire next week, doing all of that. And we're waiting to hear phase two funding. So I'm not sure when that's going to, going to occur, but, you know, we've got a big team that's working on this. We have a gentleman that's flying in from Israel, I believe, next week to, he was a previous post-doc at U of I. He's an expert in organizational psychology and focus groups, and so he'll be here. We have a professor from anthropology. We've got the director of Police Training Institute. We have somebody at the law school that's currently in France, and then we have all of the graduate assistants. And so I'm, I'm the project manager, so I'm, I'm over all of the parts and making sure that everything's moving smoothly and that everybody has everything they need. And then I also do the data side, so.
Lucky you.
Yes, it's been challenging, but really exciting. And I'm excited to see what some of the, what it shows, because it's Urbana, and we're going to learn more about police community relations in Urbana and how both quantitatively survey-wise and also quantitative or qualitative in-depth interviews with, with people that have been, you know, that have experiences with the police and how they feel about that, and how perhaps we can start to change the dynamic of the relationship.
So when, so the reason I brought that up is because I'm thinking that maybe instead of, if we're not going to get this quarterly report, maybe it would be appropriate that we get a report around the same time as to where the grant stands, what has been accomplished, where things are going with that as well. Because, you know, if it is significant enough to take your time away from this, then it's significant enough for us to deserve to hear what's going on with it. I think a report would be, not an inappropriate ask, but something we could all use to know that this is what you're up to.
I think that would be an interesting undertaking, and.
Well, I think we could certainly give you an update. I don't know what type of report you're actually speaking about, but she could give a verbal update on, like, so now we've collected all the surveys, or we've done this, and this, and now we're implementing, like, the, the different patrol areas and the hotspots or whatever. I mean, she could certainly give a verbal update on where we're at.
I'd probably would like to see a written update, just so there's something substantial that I can keep other than having to watch the video of a meeting over and over again to hear what Melissa had to say.
So there's so much involved in this grant, and things that she has to do and report and filling out the status. I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, but there, that, that's not something we're going to ask her to do, to fill out a written report that would update you on this grant. She, we could certainly give a verbal one, but I don't see that as being productive use of her time to add to her workload after we just discussed everything that she, she did. That doesn't seem like a productive use of her time.
Okay.
Chief, is it possible to share any reports that she's already submitting, so it's not a new report? Is any of it allowed to be public, or is because it's an ongoing research project that that's confidential information?
I'll, I can check with, with NIJ to see if that's something that could be shareable. I don't see why it wouldn't be able to be. And that's, that's the, it's a required semi-annual report that'll outline the things that we've done and then the things that we hope to do in the next six months, so that that would be, I have kind of a draft, it's like 12 pages, and there are lots of giant charts on it. So it would be some light reading.
Are there other questions from council? Yes, Mayor?
I have two comments. One is, I want to note that this will be Chief Morgan's last official traffic stop update, as she'll be retiring at the end of August. And I wanted to thank her for her leadership, as well as her leadership team and every single officer who has committed to making really significant changes. And there's a paradigm shift underway here, and, and I just want to express our appreciation for making that happen. To have this kind of reduction after, after our years and years of really seeing no significant change at all, to see in the first six months of this year this kind of significant reduction is a step, a huge step in the right direction. We're not there yet, but as we all noted, we didn't get here in six months, and it's going to take longer than that to, to get us where we need to be. But I just wanted to express publicly your commitment to making a difference, and Melissa, for your, your role in all of this, which we would not have been able to understand this data in the way that we do without your assistance. Secondly, as part, one of the other activities related to our ongoing focus on police community relations, the Community Relations Department is going to be holding another facilitated community police discussion on Wednesday, August 1st, 2018. It'll be a guided dialogue about police community relations in the city of Urbana. This will follow up on the discussion that occurred in January of this year. This is open to the public. The first conversation, the community was present as well, city staff, but no representation from the police department this time. I understand the police department will be part of the conversation as well. So that's at the Urbana Civic Center, Wednesday, August 1st, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Some light refreshments will be available at 5:30, and the public is invited to attend. So you'll, we'll send that out to council so you can share it with your, with your constituents.
All right, well, I guess it's my turn. Oh, Bill.
I just wanted also to express my appreciation for the efforts of the police Friday night with all the, with the two shootings. And I know some of them had to do some first aid. It's not the first time that happened, so hopefully, you know, things will turn out for the best for the teen that was shot. And I know those things, those situations can be really stressful, and just wanted to say how much we appreciate the professional work we do.
Thank you. All right, so I have three things. One very brief, one just to piggyback a little bit off of what Eric had said in terms of accidents. I'm wondering if in the final annual report, if you can just show us a chart over time in terms of accidents. I think that would be really helpful to understanding the impact. My second question is with the distracted driver grant. Do we know how many stops took place?
We, I don't offhand, because they were just entered as step stops. If I could go back and look at the dates that we did those, that is something that I would be able to do, but that's not, I would, I would need to have the dates, and then I would need to do some, some additional work on that.
I mean, in order to fully understand the increase in the step stops, if we have grants that.
Yeah.
Help us pay for additional step stops, it would be good, at least in the annual report, to say X number of stops were due to this grant. I think that would be helpful. And last but not least, so you gave us the disparity ratio on the step stops, which I think is .92 for African Americans and 1.11 for Caucasians. What is the disparity ratio for non-step stops?
1.77 for African American, .77 for Caucasian.
So you said 1.77 for African American and point?
7, .77.
.77 for Caucasian?
Yeah, that's 314 African American stops, 449 Caucasian stops.
And is that increase, decrease, the same? Do you know?
I haven't run that.
Okay.
The, the step is down from where it had been before. So I'm assuming that that's probably pretty static, but I haven't run it.
Okay, all right, those are my questions. Are there any other questions for the chief or for Melissa before we move on? No, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, we had one public comment come in from Dr. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who does not wish to speak, but she's continuously concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. All right, staff report. Seeing none, no staff reports, all right. Then the first resolution up is Resolution Number 2018-07035, R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Promotional and Marketing Agreement with the Urbana Business Association for the Fiscal Year 2018, 2019, Community Development.
Good evening. So the City Council is being asked to consider a resolution adopting a one-year promotional and marketing agreement for funding the Urbana Business Association. The proposed agreement language is consistent with the Fiscal Year 1718 agreement, but the proposed funding is $57,815, and that's a $5,000 decrease from Fiscal Year 1718. And that's actually a continued decrease, I've seen on page two. It'll show the past years and the decrease as well as the percentage. With that, I'd like to bring up Paris Falderota, to the UVA Executive Director, to give an update on information on UVA.
Are you doing a presentation, Paris?
Yeah, I didn't get, I didn't. Okay, this will be pretty quick. So UVA is a nonprofit organization. We have 11 member businesses at this time, and our mission is to serve our members by promoting Urbana as a dynamic place to live, work, and do business. Let's see. So our current activities, we do have co-op marketing that we do, and we've kind of expanded on this over the last year, where we have opportunities with WCIA on CIA Living and Morning Show, with the radio stations where members, if you are a member of the UVA, as part of your membership, you can come on television or the radio and get exposure that way. And we still have the Talk of the Town e-newsletter, opportunities for banner ads on our website, just a lot of different activities and opportunities for our members to get exposure that they normally couldn't do on their own. We have our networking events, Connections Over Coffee and Connections Over Cocktails, and so those go once a month. We normally alternate between coffee and cocktails, but recently it's been several cocktail events in a row. A lot of the members are preferring to do those events. And so it's a great opportunity for our members and the business community to get together and network together, but it's also good for our members, because if you are a member of the UVA, you can host one of these events, and it's only $175, and we provide all the food, the beverage, the marketing, and we normally have between 50 to 80 people attend these events, depending if it's a morning or evening event. We do ribbon cuttings for new businesses, or if they're having a milestone or anniversary, so businesses can get exposure that way. And we'll send out a press release and brighten council, press, mayor to the ribbon cuttings. Workshops, so we do different workshops throughout the year, mainly earlier in the year to, in the spring, and then later in the fall. We have a membership appreciation program, where we'll go around and visit our members and just reach out to them, bring them some UVA swag, just making sure that we are doing everything for them that we can possibly do, and getting feedback as well. Future plans for the UVA currently, we actually are scheduling a board retreat for this fall to kind of reevaluate what the UVA is doing, get, see what our focus is, what can we do for improvements in new membership benefits and services. Okay, so as everyone knows, a big bulk of what we do are events. So we have our annual events. We have Encore Urbana Wine Festival, which we just had this past June, and that occurs in Meadowbrook Park. We had a really great turnout. The weather was not great at the beginning of the day, but it ended up clearing out, and it went really, really well. We had over 1,100 people attend the event. We do the indoor farmer's market, market in the square. We are doing some reevaluating on the market as well, trying to add more Saturdays in the spring. Right now, we do the second and fourth Saturday in the spring, but we are looking to expand upon that, if there's availability with Lincoln Square, to do every Saturday in the spring. Sweet Corn Festival, so that is a big festival that's coming up, August 24th and 25th. That is pretty much all I do, all day, every day, and that's all I think about right now. So expanding upon going local, last year, we've actually are doing, adding local breweries. So our, the beer that we'll be serving will be as many local brewers as we can. Right now, we have rigs that signed up, blind pig that signed up, and distill is actually in the process of seeing if they have the manpower to be a part of it as well. But yeah, we'll be serving that, and then also adding local wine. So Wildwood Cellars out of St. Joe will be serving wine at the festival as well. I'm expanding on the Kid Zone, we'll have the Orpheum Children's Museum will be out there doing activities, the University for One Community Together programming will be out there. More local food, we have more food vendors than we've had in the past, and keeping locals, Champaign-Urbana and our surrounding communities a little bit farther north in Illinois, but we've had some new food vendors that we haven't seen before. So I'm really excited about that. And then we, of course, have the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We sponsor several events, like the Food Truck Rally, Urbana Grand Peace, Pre-CU Folks and Roots Festival. And then we've been partnering up, doing the Realtor Tours with the city. We have downtown trick-or-treating. We partner with the library to do activities during Halloween time. So there's a lot of different things, events-wise, that we do to promote Urbana as an exciting place to live and visit. Okay, so, speaking of Connections Over Cocktail. Okay, so, speaking of connections over cocktails, we have one coming up tomorrow evening. It actually goes 5:30 to 7, not 7:30, but it is going to be at Lincoln Square, so it's a good opportunity. There's supposed to be tours of some of the lower-level areas, and if there's any open, available spaces, so people can see what's going on at Lincoln Square. And Jim will be there, as well, as Marty, his real estate agent, so. Anybody has any questions? That's all I have.
All right, questions for Paris? Yes, Jared.
Hi, Paris.
Hi.
How's it going?
Good.
So, I've got a couple questions for you. First, big picture, is it still, as we've discussed in the past, your intention to turn the Urbana Business Association into a self-fulfilling prophecy, if you will, that it funds itself and makes its own money and does its own thing?
That would be nice. I don't see that happening in the near future, looking at, if you were to take out city, city funding completely, but if we could build it that way in, you know, in time, yes, that would be nice.
Just ask, you know, I know that obviously, that's a significant portion of your budget. It's a significant income. I'm just looking at, you know, when I, when I look at it and I see the net income of $8,000 down there, really, to me, that's a little bit of a slight, because you're getting $57,000 from the city that gets used for that kind of stuff, but that's, in my mind, free money not generated by all of your other events and all of your other income. You see what I'm saying? So, that's the big piece of the pie. In order for you to make up, you know, how this is organized and structured, you would have to make up essentially $41,000 in income somewhere else, in order to still break even on, on the expenses. So, just putting that seed in your head, just something to think about, you know, in the long term, because that's a big, that's a significant portion. That's not a significant, I mean, in $160,000 total income, I mean, that's a quarter of your, your income right there. So, to change something significantly enough to make up a quarter somewhere else-
Yeah, absolutely.
It's obviously a big ask, but I'm also just saying that for council members, so we realize, you know, what, where the dependency is, and I know we all have talked about this before in the past, about the UVA becoming self-sufficient, and I just want everyone to realize this is where we're at, so we can think about that as we're going forward. Right now, we're at a quarter dependency based on, you know, profit and loss from the business, so we would need to make that up. The UVA would need to make that up in order to become, not needing any of the, the city's money. Second thing was just the projected income from Sweet Corn, and I was looking at the estimated, estimated actual, is that a oxymoron?
[laughing]
In the, in the column of your June 18?
Oh, 'cause, yeah, 'cause I had to send this in before the books were finalized. So, this was just what is in right now-
Okay.
But it hasn't been, we haven't gone line by line. We had to make sure that everything's allocated in the right line item and all that fun stuff.
Sure, I just thought that was funny, that-
That's my terminology, it's official.
Estimated actual. So, I'm asking, so the 16, 268, 57, from the Sweet Corn income, net income, so was that last year's?
Yes, so, because Sweet Corn Fall is on just a regular annual year, and then our regular budget is on a fiscal year.
Right.
So, yeah, so that's going to be 2017 Sweet Corn Festival.
That was, that was your end result from the-
Yeah, and that, that is an actual final number.
Well, that's great, because you went from, when did you come, when did you go, come on, UVA?
Uh, October 2015, so my first Sweet Corn was 2016.
So, all three of these years that we're seeing are you at the helm, right?
Yes.
The 15 to 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's great. I mean, you went from a $12,000 loss to a $16,000 loss to a $16,000 net. So, another, you know, there was a lot of controversy about losing big bands and churning locals last year, but it seems like it was a success.
Yeah, it went really well, and we did all local bands again this year, and honestly, there's, and I gauge it by Facebook, so, because that's where people are going to run their mouth the most. So, and we've had maybe two or three people say something, but it's been all positive, and people are fine, they'll live.
And I know, just one seed to put in your head, you and I haven't gotten a chance to talk, and we probably wouldn't talk about this in other contexts that we see each other, so now that I'm thinking about it, I know I had mentioned before, maybe getting volunteer to try and do sample counts of people as they're coming around, or establishing some sort of metric that you can use to establish attendance baselines for going forward, because that can make a big difference in how you're able to look at your picture for-
Oh, yeah.
-an organization for those kinds of things. So, if you weren't thinking about it-
I think about it, and then I would research it.
Think about, how do I, how do I know how many people came?
Yeah.
And how, what's, how can I figure that out within the budgets that I have? Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Paris? Yes, Diane?
How can people help make the Sweet Corn Festival a success?
Volunteer.
[laughing]
Yes.
And how would they go about doing that?
So, go to urbansweetcornfestival.com, click on volunteers, you can see all the shifts, click a link, and sign up as many people as you possibly can, especially in the corn tent at night. Because that's when nobody wants to work, and that's when the lines are the longest.
You can be slathered in butter-
Yes.
[laughing] It's a great experience.
Yeah.
And seriously, we need about 500 volunteers for this festival.
Yeah.
So, city council members, we look forward to seeing you all there.
Yep.
Slathered in butter.
Dennis?
Okay, here's another thought about how maybe the UVA or the city itself could turn a shuttered, local building into a money-making location or site. And that would be to open the community center as Jupers Grotto, and lease out one or two gambling licenses for a year, and then reap the rewards at the end of the year. A little bit unusual, but people do gamble, they do like to have personal chants as part of their routine. We've limited that to, I don't know, up and down, you know, main thoroughfares. What if Urbana actually sanctioned one or two different licenses and ran it out of the empty city center? Kind of wild, but the city itself-
Yeah, that's something we have to run by the board and see if it fits within our mission.
The city itself wouldn't have to really do anything. These, these businesses are moderated by state law, and, I don't know, I just thought this was a real fun idea. Maybe not all that practical or popular, but you have an empty building, what can you do with it? What would draw people? Low impact to the city? Well, there are certain things that people love to do. I don't really appreciate it, but, okay, just think about it.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd vote no on that. Resolution Number 28, I'd move to, move Resolution Number 2018-07-035-R to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Erin. Discussion. I actually had one question, if I have an opportunity.
Must be a better one.
So, I was, actually, I have two questions, I apologize. So, my first question was on your budget here. You have, under your income, you have dropped membership, which are negative numbers here. So, the actual number in July 15 through June 16 was $12,000, and then the estimated actual for 17, 18 is $2,500. Those are people who choose not to pay dues, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, so they chose not to, yeah, join, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, approximately, what proportion of people are, choose not to re-up?
It's like 15%.
15%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. And then, my second question had to do with the Sweet Corn income. So, we made $16,000 last year. Does that, how much of the city money does that include?
$15,000.
Okay, so we paid the full 15 last year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, those are my questions. Discussion on this resolution. And I assume that this is a motion to move it forward with a recommendation for approval to city council?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves forward. Thank you very much, Paris.
Thank you.
All right, next on the docket, Resolution Number 2018-07-036-R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional marketing agreement with Visit Champagne County for fiscal year 2018, 2019, community development.
The city council is being asked to consider a resolution adopting a one-year promotional and marketing agreement for funding Visit Champagne County. The proposed agreement language remains consistent with last year's agreement, and the proposed funding amount is also unchanged from last year's agreement. I'd like to introduce Jane DeLuce, President and CEO of VCC, to further explain VCC's activities.
Good evening. Thank, hello. Thank you for a few minutes to talk about how Visit Champagne County fuels economic growth and improves the quality of life for this area. Okay, I should, oop. Where do I click it? Okay. We focus on sales, marketing, and enhancing our destination to bring in visitors through meetings, sports, international groups, and leisure, and engage our residents to create memorable, authentic experiences for them. I'm a little earlier speaking to you this year, so the new visitor's guide will be out the second week of August, so you have the current visitor's guide in front of you. Well, also, we don't have the fiscal year 18 and report completed yet, so tonight, what I did was bring with you a copy of the fourth quarter performance report that was also emailed out on Friday. I also included some of the postcards featuring area attractions, which are available for free in our welcome center. So, we've come a long way as a premier destination, and I have a short video that I want to show you about travel then and now, which was the national tourism theme that we premiered at our Toast to Tourism, but has now been updated with numbers that I'll talk about after the video. Tech help? Up, here it comes.
Okay.
So, you have to open up with something else.
Keep going.
Illinois cities are as diverse-
The video highlighted a 6.4% increase in local visitor spending, reaching over $404 million for the area, and $7.4 million in local tax revenue, and 3,140 tourism-related jobs, which you also have a copy of the press release in front of you. These numbers come directly from the U.S. Travel Association, and show that visitors strengthen our economy, they employ our workers, and they contribute to the public good. So, what do the numbers really mean when it comes to economic growth and improving the quality of life? We focus on helping local businesses succeed. During our second annual Restaurant Week, we featured Silver Creek, Bread Company, Dancing Dog, and Crane Alley among the area restaurants. Using Pandora Radio for the first time, we reached 14,253 unique listeners, 50 of which booked hotels with another three booking a flight to this area. The Restaurant Week webpage saw over 41,000 visits, up over 200% from the first year. Ellen Strong said, "We definitely noticed at Silver Creek a new push from customers we hadn't seen before. We are very pleased with the results, and we look forward to doing it again next year." Last August, I was honored to help kick off the opening of the Kickapoo Rail Trail. As this trail continues to transform the area, Mayor Marlin announced last week the grant to steady a trail expansion through Urbana. But did you know that we arranged for a Chicago Tribune travel editor to ride the trail and visit Riggs Brewery among her stops in this area? That article is coming later this month, and will reach untapped potential visitors to this area. Last month, we featured Autumn Berry, Prairie Fruits Farm, Anita Purvis, Crystal Lake, among the many stops for the annual agritourism Follow the Farmstead event, geared toward U of I international student visitors and families. At every stop, these international visitors purchase local products and will return again and again while they're here on campus and exploring our community. We attend dozens of trade shows and sales blitzes throughout the year to meet with hundreds of sport, group, or meeting planners. Caitlin traveled to the Circle, Wisconsin for the first time, and brought Comfort Suites Hotel. That was their first time ever going on a sales blitz. They met with 37 group tour planners over two days, and have already seen multiple leads just from those two days alone. Our Urbana Hotels serve as great partners also for our sport tournaments, including a new one that will be announced next month. There's more highlights, but to keep it in short, other than the tech here, I'll share a couple specific goals for FY19 that we continue to support our initiatives that are outlined in our Destination 2020 strategic plan. One, we want to celebrate our awesome food scene. One, we want to celebrate our awesome food scene, of course, as we brand our recognition as the greatest Midwest food town. We can't forget reaching over 3 million Midwest living readers twice, both in the September-October issue when it was announced, and then the January-February issue celebrating last fall, and that's the image on the left that was in the magazine, when the national publisher and her team came to see you for the celebration, including stops at the Urbana's Farmers Market, Blind Pig, and Grange Grove. And yes, Corny did play a role, that's our very own Terry Reece Deck playing Corny, so we appreciate UBA letting us borrow the costume for the occasion. A second goal is we want to understand the audience that's using our integrated marketing campaigns, so we're utilizing Google Analytics, Facebook, and Instagram Insights to create key customer markets. Illinois is the top state, which makes sense across all channels, but we receive traffic from nearly all 50 states, the top ones including Indiana, Missouri, California, and Texas. You can see the age ranges on the right-hand column, but I also want to point out, online traffic from international sources includes India, Canada, UK, China, Brazil, Japan, and Italy. Three, we want to expand our success through a new partnership with Great Lakes USA that includes hosting travel writers, most recently from Japan and Scotland, also fam tours, marketing partnerships, and Chinese tourism partnerships. Four, we want to provide research for Urbana, Champagne, and Savoy on the ever-growing Airbnb market as the cities embrace this ever-growing housing market. Five, we want to advocate on a local, state, and national level for community infrastructure investments with increased air service, trail development, highway signage pointing visitors to our community, and addressing any challenges with international visitation, such as a potential limit on Chinese student visa waivers. So we also want to expand our reach for the outside-of-ordinary brand. We first featured this video, hopefully our tech will work on this one, at Toasted Tourism in May. In the first two days with this branding video, it was viewed over 25,000 times and shared 279 times. So we're going to show that video.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is it. Yeah. It was, yeah. It's actually that one. Okay.
When the land provides outstanding local flavors and inspires you to be outdoors, where fresh ingredients are at your fingertips and teasing your tastebuds, when families play and learn about the future before taking a step back in time, when creating with our own hands produces artists of all kinds, where our flat landscape makes us run faster, bike longer, and enjoy the wide-open skies, when music feeds the soul and animals bring out our inner child, where orange and blue are the colors of the day amongst a rainbow of cultures, where the world comes together to learn and to kick back, where everyone is welcome. You've found a place that's a little outside of ordinary.
Okay. So finally, we're excited for the new Outside of Ordinary mural, featuring Urbana attractions, among others, to be completed in early August. This is a Photoshop version of it because it's not done yet. Hope you enjoy us on August 16th when we host the Chamber of Commerce Business After Hours in our office space where we just celebrated our first year. Our success as a destination management organization comes from our strategic partners, our regional marketing partners, our hotel partners, and our foundation partners, which are all listed in your publications. Our success also comes from a hard-working team who produce results, so a shout-out to Terry Reece Deck and Taylor Bauer on the marketing team, Kaitlyn Floyd and Ryan Reed on the Sales and Events Team, and Jen Petticord and Brooke Mayer on the Admin Team. Thank you to the Urbana City Council for your strategic partnership, and to Rachel Storm for representing Urbana on our board. We're excited about our vision to champion the greater Champagne County area as a memorable, extraordinary destination. Let me know if you have any questions or comments, thank you.
All right, questions? Aaron?
So thanks, Jane, I appreciate the, all the work in the videos. Shouts-out to Jason behind the scenes. So, one of the things that I'm curious about, you said sporting events and things like that are attractions, marathons, and various different things. I've had numerous conversations with people about the IHSA basketball tournament. Do you all work to try to get that back from Peoria and bring it back to State Farm Center?
Yeah, we actually co-host the bid with Athletics, and we will be revisiting that, that it will come up again. So our, our bid will be due in December of 19, for them to vote on in March of 20, and then the first time it'd be hosted would be 2021. So it's an every-five-year deal. So at the same time, we would also be renewing the wrestling agreement as well as the football agreement. So I think last time, to be honest, when we showed the State Farm Center as a Dust Bowl before it was renovated, I think that didn't help. And another thing that we've pointed out to IHSA is when they met to discuss it, they discussed it during the basketball tournament in Peoria. So the Board of Directors were all sitting there with everything around them, so we've asked for a neutral site when they vote on it again to be able to have a fair shot of being able to discuss it. Our community really came together the last time, both with the facilities. Our hotels offered wonderful favorable rates, and we raised enough money for the bid, is what it really takes. So we're ready to do that again, and I think with Josh Whitman as the new AD, that it will be a very strong community effort.
So, I know Paris is gone already, but with the growing Congolese community and folks from, from the African community, African-American as well, but African community in particular, there's been a lot of conversations around a African festival. Who, would that be something that we would work, that UBA would work with you guys on? How would something like that come into play? Is that more UBA than you?
I think that could be a group effort. I think what, what we like to do is work with the group who initiates it and then figure out, how can we help make it happen? Is it, is it a UBA thing? Possibly. Is it a, is it a Visit Champagne County thing? We usually are more of a supportive role to try to place them where they need to be and bring together the collaborative partners with it. But I think it's a terrific idea to celebrate that culture that continues to grow in this community, and I would love to have that conversation with whoever the appropriate people are.
Okay. The other one is the lot of genuine interest that we've talked to Brandon about this on numerous occasions, the Gus Macker. What role have you all played historically, if any, in the Gus Macker?
Oh, gosh, that goes back. We, when there used to be a Sports Commission, before the Sports Commission became kind of integrated into Visit Champagne County, it was hosted, kind of co-hosted by us with the Champagne Park District at that time, and then it became, it kind of was one of those where people were growing with it, and then people kind of went away with it and did other things because they didn't find as many people were starting to want to be involved with it, so it kind of took a downward dip. So what we do is if, if a group comes to us and wants to do a tournament of any kind, Gus Macker, or other, any other three-on-three, five-on-five, whatever kind of tournament, we look to the partners, either Champagne Park District, Urbana Park District, or the university, and see first of all if we even have the facility availability to be able to host something like that. Gus Macker obviously is unique because you can do it in the streets, but it still takes an organizing body to be able to have that particular event. So if there was an interest in bringing that back again, we would then go back to as well the park districts. I mean, Gus Macker usually is more focused on local residents than it does bring in visitors, so with our mission to kind of bring in outside tournaments, we focus on ones that are bringing in players from outside areas that are coming in to compete in this, in this community.
Well, I'm just, the, in the vision that is etched into my memory is a huge effort, Gus Macker effort, when, when the Illini players, Marcus Griffin and, and Frank, Frank, what was Frank Williams?
Frank Williams, yeah.
Was walking around in the area, all down around West Side Park. It was a tremendous effort, my nephews were participating in it. I thought it brought people from various different surrounding areas to come in and spend money in the, in the cities here in Champagne, Urbana. And I know that I've had numerous conversations about the desire to bring that back. Now, I know we have to have partners, and I think this is in connection with the presentation that I think you sat through earlier about the urgency to address some of the concerns that we have in the community. The Gus Macker is something that I'm hearing from in the community, in particular in the African-American community, that would be a very, very positive thing for us to help address some of the concerns and activities, or lack thereof, in the community. Now, I don't know all the ins and outs of it. I know that the gentleman Marshawn, who's a barber here, was very interested in trying to do something like that. We've had some conversations with, with Brandon about it, but I think he needs some assistance in trying to really pull it together and have the, the players at the table that can help make it happen. But, and I'll take this opportunity, Jane, to talk about something that was somewhat of a concern for me when I saw the presentation of your staff, right? We've talked a lot about whether or not we've given social service funding or the lack of interest to continue giving funding to entities that don't reflect the demographics of our community. And from what I can see with your staff, I don't see any people of color in, in your staff. So that's a concern for me, and I wanted to see if you would speak to that, please.
Oh, I'd be happy to. We look at finding, first of all, the best candidates for the team. We have a small team, and we also look at the diversity within our Board of Directors as well. So if you look at them, because it's a joint effort, so if you look at the makeup of both of our team and our Board of Directors, it's actually quite diverse with that. Our chair, Shayla Matuka, is, is obviously African-American, as well as Tracy Pettigrew, who serves on our Board of Directors. So where we don't always have it in the staff at the time that we find the best candidate for the job, and that is one thing that, I came from the University of Illinois, so it's a very strongly inbred in, in my head to do that, is to be able to look and find the most potential candidates to be able to do it, and then find the best person that works for that particular job. So sometimes it's, it's with the skill sets that come at that particular time, and we try very hard to make it as diverse as possible.
So, I appreciate that, and I understand, all of us, anyone who's running any particular business, campaigns, or anything else, you want the best person that you can find to do the job. But we have to be very intentional about addressing the issues and the lack of diversity. And so I think for any institution, entity, especially seeking public dollars that doesn't have any reflection of people of color in their staff, at this juncture where we are, I, I find that to be unacceptable, personally. Now, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, and I, it's not an attack on you, Jane?
No, I completely understand, absolutely. It's very intentional on my part, I, I can tell you that. I work very hard to find a very good pool of candidates that we can interview and bring in, and even hire, and sometimes that doesn't always work out, either dependence of someone of color or not of color as well, too.
And I know that sometimes the stories have gone similar to this. Here's a qualified candidate, maybe even a female candidate. Here's this male who comes in, and they say, well, she's not qualified, but then they have her train him, right? Okay, so I think even in the situation that we're describing, that maybe somebody has a little bit more that they're bringing to the table, but they are status quo, and then there's a person of color who's really right there, who may need a little extra effort, somebody else on the team could help bring them along. But I think I've made my point. I appreciate your presentation.
Absolutely.
And the questions around, answering the questions around some of the other entities or other events that we like to see happen.
Right, and we can follow up on those, and I'll talk to Brandon and, and staff about that as well, too.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, any other questions? Jared?
Hey, Jane.
Hi.
I just had one quick question. I don't see, I'm surprised that I don't see anything in here about wedding venues in the Champagne County Guide, is there one, something in there that I'm missing?
We, for the Visitors' Guides, we don't, we don't, on the print piece, we don't have a whole thing listed on that, but it's all online, yeah.
Yeah, I know you have it on the website.
Because most of the time, it's not a recruiting tool. It's for people that are visiting here to make their choice to come here, so we use it more for online with that, people that are already making their decision, and we, we talk at least weekly with people about unique wedding venues, because we have quite a few of those, and then try to help them with their hotel accommodations or whatever other servicing types of things that they need.
Sure, I, I just know that a portion of our clientele at the company I work for are not from Champagne County and come and get married here.
Right.
People, and it's usually folks that are more rural, that live around town, not in Champagne County, but are from the small towns surrounding that are looking for a new place to, to get married, so. I was just curious as to why that, why that one, that particular thing that attracts people from out of town?
Most of it, people are looking online, in all honesty. So what we try to do with the Visitors' Guide is make it more of a reader piece, so it's more of a magazine that tells the story of the community versus being listings. You'll see a lot less listings about things. It's kind of celebrating the people that are here and the things that are, you can do when you're here. So should you choose it, we don't really point out a ton of unique meeting venues either. We try to kind of just work with them on that, those pieces separately, and then be able to use the Visitors' Guide as more of a general piece of what they can do when they're here.
Sure.
So, but I appreciate, yeah, well, well, well put. I can definitely think about that and talk to our staff about it.
And one other consideration, when you guys are generating the content for this, is that a team effort, or is one of your particular folks work on highlighting and writing the content for, for what goes in here?
Ninety-five percent of it is done, we, that, that particular guide, with our resources, is written, designed, and produced in-house by one, one person. And we use solo, yeah, believe me, during that Visitors' Kind season, we don't see her doing much of anything else, no, she really does a lot. But then we also get guest editorials from people, particularly the artisans that we are trying to celebrate. And then we talk to, like Kelly, Kelly White for Forty North with some arts information with her, or from festivals with people. So we kind of use some other guests, guest article writers as needed for the guide. But she does the majority of it. It's, it's amazing to be able to produce this kind of piece in-house.
Well, I'm excited to see next year's and hopefully see something from the Pink Pig in it.
Yeah, I think it will be included, that came out after last, last year was already printed.
And in, in the barbecue world, if you haven't also had a chance, I don't think it's technically in Urbana because it's on the other side, but in Champagne, I talked to Way, it's listed in here, but definitely worth telling your writer to go check out is Wooden Hog.
Yeah.
That's on, that's on Forest Street.
Yeah, we've done, yeah, we've actually done Social Media Blast, an online blog about that one already, so, yeah.
I have to, I'll have to.
Very tasty.
I'll have to look for that, it's, it's a hidden gem.
It is, it is. We definitely have good barbecue here.
Turkey's good. Turkey tips, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll move this to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. All those in favor, oh, sorry, is there a discussion before we go? Everybody's getting ready to vote. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that one moves forward. Ordinance number 2018-07051, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Federal Drive, Public Works.
Good evening, Craig Schumpf, Assistant City Engineer. The ordinance before you prohibits parking on Federal Drive at certain locations, east and west, south of Cardinal Court. There is a map in your packet that, in red, shows the exact locations of prohibition of parking that we're asking for. Basically, we had some businesses that approached us. There was some difficulty getting large trucks to be able to use the loading dock due to the proximity of due to the proximity of cars parked on the adjacent street. So we looked in, city staff looked into the situation. We talked to the Traffic Commission about it. And in the end, this was the best compromise to, for all parties that were involved. So it's recommended from the Traffic Commission that City Council consider the passing of this ordinance. Any questions?
Questions? Jared?
I'd like to make a motion that we, no, I lost my. Move ordinance number 2018-07-051, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets of Federal Drive. Forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
A motion made by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That one moves on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2018-07-052, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 26, regarding vehicles for hire in 2018, Finance.
Good evening. I have no fancy slides for you tonight, or videos. But I would like to give you a brief summary of the vehicle for hire proposed changes before you. Urbana and Champaign have had an intergovernmental agreement for licensing vehicles for hire since 1995. Urbana acts as the lead agency. Vehicle for hire business owners and drivers are required to license annually. Owners and drivers complete an application process, they provide the required documentation, and they undergo a background check. On May 17th, a joint public input meeting was held to discuss the proposed changes with vehicle for hire owners and drivers. On July 17th, the proposed changes before you tonight were presented at the Champaign City Council meeting, where Champaign City Council directed their staff to draft an ordinance of the proposed changes for approval at a later date. A lot of the proposed changes before you tonight are minor changes and are intended just to clean up the article. The major changes include changing the license renewal date from the end of June to the end of October, removing the application requirement in reference to asking the applicant if they've ever been convicted of a felony, adding a provision preventing an applicant from obtaining a vehicle for hire driver's license who has had more than three moving violations in the prior three-year period, or at least one major violation in the prior three-year period. The removal of the blanket four-year felony conviction, and adopt proposed changes modeled off of the Transportation Network Providers Act for drivers and owners that would have the most severe impact on public safety. Add a provision prohibiting any applicant from obtaining a vehicle for hire driver business license who is a match in the National Sex Offenders Registry Database, as well as owner. Add an applicant's right to appeal a denial decision for specific felony convictions. Add a provision for every operator that requires passengers to pay fares in cash to post a cash-only sign noticeably in the rear of the vehicle, as well as alert passengers prior to the start of any ride that only cash is acceptable. And lastly, staff is asking council to approve the changes attached in Exhibit A, amending Chapter 26, or approve portions thereof, make proposed changes, and direct staff to add and/or delete parts. Thank you.
All right, questions? Dean?
Couple of questions, so I'll try to just group it into one thing here. Can you explain to me what initiated this? I understand Champaign has it already, but what got us rolling in this direction on this?
Well, from time to time, we review parts of the ordinances. I handle the licensing for the city. This is something as owners and as drivers, and even as council members or other staff members or community ask why we do certain things, we, you know, think about it, and then we'll meet. What really brought this on was a few years ago when transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft started in the community. And, and then also just changes with the felony convictions, that was something else. So those are probably the two major reasons why we've brought these changes forward today.
Okay, and do you know right off, I didn't have a chance to look this up, what are Uber standards for criminal backgrounds?
Exactly what we've put in here, except they have seven years requirement for felony convictions instead of the four.
So they have a little higher standard?
Right.
Would it be fair to say that the taxi industry is already getting their rear ends handed to them by Uber?
I mean, in my memo, over a three-year period, there has been a decline in vehicle for hire companies that are in business. I mean, you could say that it's helped weed out some of those smaller, well, not so, not smaller, but just the companies that maybe they were only doing it as a part-time job, and they had something else on their plate. But I think it's certainly hurt their business.
I've, I've just heard a lot of complaints from taxi owners and, and operators that Uber is putting, putting a hurt on them pretty bad. And I'm thinking of Uber has a higher standard for criminal background checks. That would be a factor in my decision-making before I put one of my kids or my family member in a taxi or an Uber. So it might not, has anybody from the city checked with any taxi industry people to see if they think this is good for them or bad for them?
Well, the public input meeting that we held here at the City of Urbana with the City of Champaign, where vehicle for hire owners and drivers were invited to attend, they would love to see TNCs regulated by the cities.
TNCs?
Transportation Network Companies, like Uber and Lyft.
Right, but were they specifically asked, to your knowledge, if, were the taxi companies asked at all if, you know, this would be good for them or bad for them, is what I was trying to.
The changes?
Yeah, these changes.
They are in favor of the changes. What I cited from that public input meeting and my memo, they would like to see TNCs license. They, they like the opportunity of having a hearing for felony convictions for, for people who otherwise wouldn't have an opportunity to even be considered to have a job. But mainly, their main thing was they would really like to see the TNCs under the same type of regulations that they're held to.
Okay, but they're okay with lowering the standards locally? But they would like the TNCs to be?
There, there's no standards that would be lowered for them as vehicle for hires. They're already, what, what happens right now for background, is that what we're?
Well, you were saying it was seven years for Uber, which would be a higher standard than this four-year.
It is, but taxi drivers and business owners are already held to the four-year standard, and that's the way that's been for years. We, you know.
So they're not lowering that?
We're not lowering that, no.
Okay, I'll try to make this my last question, I hope, is who's going to define acts of violence and terror? Is that going to be like something from Uniform Crime Reports? Or is that going to be state statutes, or the wisdom of our city council, or?
Right, so the HRC is, they would review if someone wanted to appeal. We've already received from our own legal division, not Jim, because I don't want to call Jim out, but just definitions of those specific, what they, they consider, you know, to be, you know, for public safety reasons. We have all those outlined. So the HRC would be, you know, referring to those, speaking to City Legal, as well as the Police Department, and making their determinations. And I could ask Facilia Clark, who's come tonight, if you wanted a little bit more specifics on that, on how that would go.
I think it'd be helpful to define the acts of violence in the resolution or the ordinance, or, you know, if possible, in the, in the future. That's all I was getting at there. But this, you know, I'm all about second chances. It's just, this is a highly public position. This isn't working in a back room at a auto parts store, so that's why I'm asking these questions. So if this does get passed, I might suggest that we define acts of violence. It's a pretty broad term. I mean, does that include domestic violence, or does that mean armed robbery, or what does it mean? All right, thank you.
Aaron?
All right, so thank you. Appreciate all the work that you've done around this. Of course, it goes back quite a long time. For us, one question I had was, is, and maybe this is a legal question, is there a distinction between the term prohibit and prevent? From a legal standpoint?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if this ordinance.
Definitionally, are you talking about def?
Well, let me, let me rephrase it in this way. So if it says, remove, replace conviction of a felony, trying to make sure I have the proper one, the, the right one here. So in one of them, it says, remove the blanket felony conviction provision preventing an applicant from obtaining a vehicle for driver's license within a four-year period. Add a provision prohibiting any applicant from obtaining a vehicle for hire driver's license who is a match in the National Sex Offenders Registry Database. So I'm just, it seems as if that word is being used somewhat interchangeably within the, the context of the ordinance.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, if you're quoting the memo, I didn't draft the memo. But it sounds, I would tend to agree, the way the context of the two words seem to be synonymous.
Okay, okay, so, tend to be, but I know the splitting of hairs in the legal world. So does prohibit in a sentence mean that it would make the appeal process null and void if we say prohibit?
No, I don't think so. I, I think the key, the key issue in the appeal process is whether the determination that sought to be appealed was based on, has a rational basis, a phrase that I know you're quite familiar with. And there has, you know, and the ordinance needs to be, and that's why I think Beth has delineated a number of these potential, you know, bases for conviction and convictions. It, it should be, where possible, as clear as possible rather than arbitrary. Because if it's arbitrary, then it can be capricious, and then it's basically flip a coin. And that's not what we're all about, and legally, that's not sustainable. That's why, I think that's partly why it, it has been recommended to delete the provision that, you know, classifies basically any felony as a prohibition or a bar to getting a license, and substituting that with a number of types of convictions where one might worry. For instance, a child predator-type conviction. You know, do you want that taxi driver, for that matter, an Uber driver, though this doesn't apply to Uber yet, picking up children at the high school or at the grammar school? So I, I think that's why this has been delineated. And I know, I think you're familiar with the fact, actually what Beth didn't bring about is, this has been, this whole thing, especially the area involving arrest, has been in, criminal record, has been kicking around, what, about three years now? Two and a half years we've been discussing this? And it keeps going back and forth. And of course, we have to have Champaign's buy-in because this is a cooperative program. And apparently, at least, the people negotiating to try to come up with these provisions and get rid of the blanket four-year, it could be any kind of, it could be a wire fraud, who knows? It has nothing to do with driving a taxi, getting rid of those kinds of violations. But coming up with the list of violations has, the limited involvement I had a year or two ago has always been difficult. And I think the group that negotiated this finally came up with a list that makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that from a legal perspective, that as we talked about this, I attended the meeting, we worked, CWC worked with the Human Relations Commission for a long time to get the language around, ban the box, and all that kind of different stuff. So I'm very familiar with this process, and the vehicle for hire thing was something that I've been pretty aware of for a long time. I wanted to make sure that while we are, and I'm in support of having an appeals process, and I understand that we, to your point, Dean, that we want to list some things, but if you have it where there's an appeals process, the individual can come before the Human Relations Board and make their case as to the specificity of their case. For instance, when, when dealing with, being on the national registry, it is my understanding that an individual, for instance, there could be a consensual relationship between an 18-year-old and a 17-year-old, or something like that.
Yeah, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, please, go ahead.
So the only appeals cases that the HRC would be hearing are those outlined in Section 2628 of the felony convictions. Someone on the National Sex Offenders Registry Database would not be able to appeal. Only those offenses outlined in 2628A4, as well as in the Business Section under 2643A1, which are the exact same set of felony.
So before I get way ahead of myself, I, I don't want to get into the weeds of that. I think that some folks may want to talk to us about what that looks like. And they're much more qualified to speak to the nuances of even that. Because while we look to do whatever we can to protect the public, especially from, from predators, things like that, when we make laws, or when laws are made in Springfield or in the federal level, sometimes they're big blanket laws, and people get swept up in them. So a person with a felony conviction for X number of grams of, of a drug could be 10. If it, if it's more than nine, it's a felony. Well, that same, that person gets the same felony as a person who has 3,000 grams. So it doesn't, it's not as specific in relationship to an offense as we would like for it to be. And so people who end up on that registry, there are vast different ways they ended up on that registry. And there's other folks who would, may want to talk to us about that. I know it's not going to be perfect, whatever it is that we come up with, but I just wanted to, to raise a, that, that, that point that the HRC is not going to hear those particular cases. They're only going to hear the ones, okay.
For the felony conviction, right?
So, okay. And this ordinance, of course, does not apply to Uber or Lyft in any way, shape, or form.
It does not, but it is staff's intent to bring that to council for a review at a later date.
Okay. All right.
Bill?
Yeah, I had a question about the wording of the replacement. So replacement with conviction of felony within the past four years, that part. And it says, it lists DUI for drugs, alcohol, fraud, sexual offenses, use of a motor vehicle to commit a felony, a crime involving property damage. So is that use of a motor vehicle go along with everything after that? So you have to have a use of a motor vehicle in committing property damage, theft, acts of violence, acts of terror?
Can you tell me what you're looking, where you're at?
Well, I think they're all about the same. There's, it's listed several times. But say, like, the second bullet on the top of page two, every place where it says a crime, use of a motor vehicle to commit a felony, and then it lists some other things. I can't tell whether you have to have used the motor vehicle to do all of each of those things? No. No, so any theft, any crime involving property damage, any act of violence?
Right.
It disqualify you?
I just, yeah, and I just, I want to point out, though, that what staff's brought before you tonight for these, to remove the blanket provision, that's currently what all vehicle for hire drivers and owners still have to license under, or not license under. This was an approved set of requirements that the state adopted for the Transportation Network Act, Providers Act, that they hold to Uber and Lyft. So the cities have worked together, having some sort of guidelines for background check requirements to put this together for you. The appeals process that we're proposing in, in this Chapter 26 is, I realize there's a lot of, you know, felony convictions, different ones listed out here, but they've never had an appeals process in the past. And now there's something, if they did have something for, let's just say, writing a bad check, and they were, you know, if you got a felony for that, they could go before, ask for an appeal, go before the HRC. The HRC could hear that, and instead of, you know, having to wait four years, maybe it's been two years and they're allowed to license. Where, in the past, they haven't had that ability. You know, things for, that the HRC is going to be reviewing would be, and for like fraud of a vehicle, like maybe they've changed the. fraud of a vehicle, like maybe they've changed the odometer back, you know, things like that, that might cause harm to the public. Um, and I'll let Vassilia talk a little more on that.
Well, first of all, I, I think that I'm hearing that the HRC and maybe finance has greater responsibility in terms of taking a look at the convictions themselves. The first step in the process, I understand, is that there is a criminal background check done by the police department, is that correct?
Right, right.
So, what I'm, what I'm imagining is that by the time it gets to the HRC, the police department will have rendered a decision, one way or the other, whether or not these, this person would otherwise qualify for a license.
Mm-huh.
Does it help? It's not the HRC.
Um, just to, so the, the HRC would only get involved if it's appealed?
Yes.
Then, I also have a question about the driving on a suspended or revoked license. Can you get your license suspended for not paying a fine?
Um, not paying a parking ticket?
Hmm, say you have accumulated parking tickets?
It would be 10 or more tickets.
So you can?
You can, but you would never, that probably wouldn't happen in Urbana, because we boot you after five.
And if, and for any of these moving violations, um, three moving violations in the prior three years, or one major violation, we're calling suspended license a major violation. Do we get data from other states when we do the back, with the checks on the moving violations?
It's just an Illinois State Criminal Background Check currently. If, um, you approve the changes proposed here tonight, it would be a state and FBI, so it would go nationwide.
For the criminal background checks? How about for the, the moving violations?
I assume it would catch all that as well.
It would catch other states?
Yep. That's my understanding.
I guess, yeah, I, I just want, have clarification for sure on whether that use of a motor vehicle, because it will be determined by the police department, pretty much, unless somebody wants to appeal it. And it's, there's going to be a little bit of a threshold for people to appeal it, that they have to, really want the job, or they, you know, they have to have a lot, a little more confidence, so it's going to be a big strike against them if the police department have to basically automatically deny them because it falls under the, the rules. So I would like some clarification, um, maybe, unless it's obvious, whether use of a motor vehicle goes with all of those things that follow, or whether it's-
I think rather than focusing on the memo, which is a shortened version of describing what, and it appears you are focusing on the memo, it's better to focus on the draft ordinance, and subset, or A4, who has been convicted within the past four years of driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol, comma, fraud, I don't think you drive to commit a fraud, uh, sexual offenses, I don't think it's limited to just sexual offenses in a car, uh, use of, what is it, use of a motor vehicle to commit a felony, such as, you know, maybe robbing a convenience store and being the, the getaway car, a crime involving property damage or theft, acts of violence or acts of terror.
Yes, so my question is, do you have to use a motor vehicle-
No.
-to cause property damage?
No.
So any, any crime that causes property damage?
Yep.
Doesn't even have to be a felony?
Well-
It has to be a felony. No, it has to be a felony.
Yeah, uh, a vehicle to commit a felony. But no, these are independent, uh, felony convictions. They, they are not all linked to doing it while driving a car.
That language comes from the state law?
Yes, the Transportation Network Providers Act.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so Jared and then Dean, Jared?
Yeah, I guess I'm, uh, I'm confused on that, Jim. Because if we have struck the phrase of a felony prior to the listing of all of those other, uh, offenses, I mean, in the, uh, in the memo, it says, "Replace blanket felony conviction provision," and blah, blah, blah. Uh, and it says, "Replace with conviction of a felony," and literally, the words of a felony have been stricken from the ordinance. To me, that reads as any, so here's what I'm getting at, it's maybe we need to see this application itself to understand exactly what it's going to look like, because if I'm a person, uh, who's applying, and I read the words, "Who has been convicted within the past four years of DUI, uh, fraud, sexual offenses, use," that just means, that to me reads as any crime that falls under that category, whether it's a misdemeanor of felony or not.
I suspect, you know, not being an expert in criminal law, that except for possibly theft, and I don't know if retail theft is included in that or not in the statute, all of these are felonies. I, I am not aware of a misdemeanor, I, again, I may be wrong, a misdemeanor involving,
Well, there definitely are, because there, there are acts of violence that are felonies or misdemeanors-
Yes.
-that could be considered either or.
It, it depends on how they're charged, but drugs, driving under the influence, I believe, is a felony, I don't think that's a misdemeanor. Uh, fraud, I believe that's a felony. Sex offenses are a felony. Uh, use of a motor vehicle to commit a felony-
That one is obvious.
-a crime involving property damage.
Plenty of misdemeanors there, I would bet.
There could be there. Uh, thefts, acts of violence, uh, again, it, it depends on what you mean by violence, but I suspect most of them are felonies.
Well-
Uh, acts of terror clearly are felonies.
Right, but you understand what I'm getting at?
I understand, I understand what you're getting at.
It seems arbitrary to me that it would also be being directed at people who may be convicted of misdemeanors in the application of these words. Uh, if I read that, that's what I would think. If I had one of those convictions, then I'm not even going to check that box, and that made it to other people from even seeking the application itself, because now it's not clear that it has to have been a conviction of felony stature, because the only where, the only place in which a felony is literally listed, and people may not be knowledgeable of the law, if they've been convicted of these things, they probably are, but they may not be knowledgeable even still. They might be knowledgeable, and they might read these things and think, oh, well, I've committed one of these things, but it was a misdemeanor. I mean, property damage, there's lots, I know there's misdemeanors in there, anyway.
Beth, is there a box to check regarding criminal? It's all based on the background-
It's based on the background check.
Okay, I think we need clarification from, uh, PD in whether, uh, background checks pick up misdemeanors. If they don't pick up misdemeanors, then misdemeanors are obviously not part of it.
But that, that denial then would be unknown to an applicant if there's no, or is this, this is spelled out in the application?
Yeah, they, they would receive a notification of the denial.
But they wouldn't know when they were applying that they're, that they could be rejected for these reasons?
They would know that, from, based off of the ordinance.
If they read the ordinance, but it may not be on the application that they're filling out.
I mean, they would also have an appeals process if they wanted to appeal the denial, based off of the results of the background check.
Okay, Aaron's got a thought.
Before, Aaron, Dean, you had your hand up after Bill, do you have something?
Yeah, well, I was confused earlier too, but I think I kind of just answered my own question. I mean, at the beginning of the sentence, where it says, "Replace with a conviction of a felony within the past four years of driving under the influence," then it goes on and on with the property damage, acts of violence, terror, so any of these crimes would have to be felony level.
But that's not what the sentencing ordinance is.
Right.
Okay. But property damage would be $500 or more for felony. My concern was when I saw acts of violence, I'm thinking, like, somebody gets a domestic abuse, and then it's considered an act of violence. If somebody makes a harassing phone call to their ex-spouse or whatever, you know, it could be under the acts of, um, what do they call it? I don't know, but it's listed under acts of terror now. So broad terms like that just concern me, but it is stuck with felony, but it's not in the ordinance. But I'm, I feel better that there's an appeals process, at least, so somebody could explain theirself, so that's all.
It's my understanding that these were for felony convictions. Um, the wording is taken from the Transportation Network Providers Act, which I would be more than happy to send to each of you, if you would like that, just to review. I'm only proposing changes, and you can direct me to do whatever you like.
Dean?
Maybe you would know. Uh, background checks, I'm sure when you were an officer, you probably requested a number of background checks?
Through LEEDs and NCIC.
Right. Does LEEDs report misdemeanors?
Does LEEDs report misdemeanors? I think so.
Yeah, I think, as I said, that's, that's one worth, because if they don't, then that's the answer, because it's based on background check. If they do, then maybe we need, uh, there needs to be some tinkering with this, and I don't know what Champagne will do, how they interpret it.
I, they're, they're going, they just listened to the proposed changes, and they directed their staff to, they didn't have any, um, they were in favor of what was presented. They liked the appeals process.
They haven't adopted this yet.
They have not adopted this yet.
Aaron?
So, would a interjection of the word felony? So I'm in, uh, in the ordinance, proposed ordinance changes, uh, what used to be three, which is now four, towards the bottom. Uh, I think we've resolved that the top, uh, violations of driving under the influence of alcohol, fraud, sexual offenses, were all felonies, so I don't know if we need to put the word felony in there. Uh, but in the, uh, following sentences, uh, we have felony in the, in motor vehicle to commit a felony, if we said a felony crime involving the following, property damage, theft, acts of violence, or acts of terror, would that resolve the concerns? Then it's clear, I think it's clear, I know that the work that we did with the Human Relations Commission, we are not allowed in the city of Abana to ask people if they have felony convictions on the applications, right? So I do think that we're trying to dance around that as well, but this is a notification, this is not a part of the application, right? Okay. So I think that would resolve our concerns, if our friends in Champagne would be amenable to that, I think it gives the clarity that we were looking for.
If you want to further clarify, you might also want the, the, the word felony before thefts.
Before, so that's why I said, a, a felony crime involving the following, property damage, theft, acts of violence, or acts of terror.
Yeah. Though I think acts of terror certainly rise to the level of a felony, I'm not aware of a misdemeanor act of terror.
Well, I won't take you back through history at this particular point.
I just wanted to comment, like, because I did a quick Google, apparently not all DUIs are felonies in the state of Illinois. They start as misdemeanors, so, yes.
Okay, so then-
So we definitely need to put felonies convicted of blah, 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 blah.
Well, I mean, that, that, that's a policy decision, but if somebody, misdemeanor or not, has been convicted of a DUI involving some kind of substance, whether it's a misdemeanor or felony, you all have to decide as a policy, do you want that person driving your family around?
All right, Jim.
And if you were to recommend that change, you would also want it for the owner as well, in that same section?
Right, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Do, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I would, um, well, with the proposed changes, um, I would recommend that we move this forward to counsel with recommendation for approval.
With the proposed changes, I would second that.
Uh, moved by Aaron, seconded by Dean, any further discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I don't really see a, a big difference in the, in the restrictions, it seems like we list just about everything that would be a felony. I do, I'd like the appeal process, that's the main attraction, um, I wonder if there's some way we could make that part easier? Like, I don't know if we'd necessarily want an automatic approval, automatic appeal, but at least provide a form where all they have to do is sign it and send it back, or something like that? Have you thought about implementation?
So we have thought about that, and we have discussed it, and we thought at the time that they applied for a license, we could make sure that they were supplied with information in regards to that. The letter that they would receive if it, if it was a denial letter, um, we thought the HRC's office could be sending those out, um, with the information on, you know, how to appeal, the timeframe for appeal, what to do, um, so we have this, the process, we have discussed that.
Okay, I think making that, that step as easy as possible would help prevent people that have minor convictions from giving up, basically.
All right, yes, Aaron?
Just a, um, a point, so that the audience and so that the listeners at home understand, if they have any particular concerns about this, this is just being rec, moved to counsel with recommendation for approval. There's still time for individuals who want to come and speak with you, or to speak with members in Champagne, especially, I, I know that folks are concerned about the, um, the registry, right? Those are some of the concerns that are still out there about the nuances of being on that, uh, Sex Offender Registry. So, uh, just for people who I know who have talked to me about it, they know that they can still come and, and talk to, would they come directly to you?
They, they could contact me, if I don't have the exact answer for them, I could find that out. I'd be more than happy to talk to them.
All right, thank you.
Dean?
One last question, getting sick of me. Uh, is there a cost, no, I didn't ask you, is there a cost to go through the appeal process? I can't believe you answered that. How often do I talk at city council, Beth? How often do I talk? I, I hold it up for like a year, and then I ask questions.
Um, what was your question again?
Is there a cost for the appeals process?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor of moving this forward with a recommendation for approval to counsel with the proposed changes, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that one moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the last one on the agenda for today is ordinance number 2018-07053, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance amendment number one on the bus. Elizabeth?
So, so I did, um, just want to take a minute to introduce you to Don Ho, I know you saw him receive an award earlier. Um, Don has been with the city since 2015, and he's been working two part-time jobs, both in finance and community development, and he recently accepted the position of financial analyst in the finance department. Um, he, Don has a bachelor's in economics, a master's in finance and economics, he's working on a master's in computer science now, apparently he doesn't have enough to do. And so I'm, I'm very excited that he's accepted this position, and he is, in fact, the person who prepared this budget amendment, so I will let him tell you about it.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, before I start, I would like to point out that, um, there, there's an item that needs to be removed from the budget amendment, and that is the sewer televising truck. Uh, what happened was that I didn't realize that it was already included in the budget, while I was preparing the memo, so, yeah, that was a rookie mistake. Yeah, um, so there should be an attach, um, a new, an updated attachment in front of you, and, uh, that should reflect that change. So before the city council tonight is a first budget amendment of, uh, for fiscal year 1819, um, it looks like there are quite a few items on this list, but the majority of the items are really just timing adjustments. So it basically means that, um, moves, basically means moving money from the previous fiscal year to the current fiscal year, excuse me, because an item was not purchased, or a project was not completed in time in the previous fiscal year. Since, uh, we're just moving money from one year to another, there's no impacts on fund balances. Um, it's a little out of order, but I talk about these items first, because they are a little less complicated. The first thing is the Windsor Road Project, um, so a portion of the money was not spent in 2018, so we're moving that to 2019 to pay for project-related expenses. And there are also a few items in the verb that also need to be moved, and these items include, um, phone system replacement, a GPS survey equipment, and a KNI. Like I said before, these changes have no impact on fund balances, um, since they are just timing adjustments. Okay, and now I'm going in order again. The first one is the labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. The first one is the labor agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police. So, when the city approved the budget for fiscal year 19, labor negotiation was still in progress. So, we, we didn't know all the details at that time, except for the salary increases. So, this budget amendment will reflect all the other increases. The total increase in the general fund is $42,394, of which $18,829 is a one-time expenditure for retro pay. The next item is the vehicle motor pool. It was introduced to make more efficient use of vehicles. So, as a result, we need to update internal charges to each participating department based on vehicle usage. The next item is the, is the development incentives in Central TIF. The amount was not, also not included in the budget, so this budget amendment will fix that issue. The end of fund transfer from TIF II Fund to Central TIF Fund will also increase by the same amount. And the last thing is the copier supplies and maintenance. Like the previous item, the budget was, the amount was not included in the budget in the IT fund, so this budget amendment will correct that error. In terms of fiscal impact, the city will end fiscal year 1819 with an unaside fund balance in the general operating fund of $4.86 million or 14.76% of recurring expenditures. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, welcome officially. Thank you for your presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Jared?
I don't have any questions, but I have a motion. I'll move ordinance number 2018-07053, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance with budget amendment number one. Omnibus, forward to full council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Bill?
Just to make sure there's no confusion, in case somebody else reads about it, or reads this, the FOP agreement costs us a lot more than this, but we budgeted for it, right? I mean...
Right, correct. So, we made a, made a very accurate guess on the salary increases, which are the bulk of the cost associated with the labor agreement. But we didn't know all of these other details.
So, this was just fine-tuning basically what we had guessed in the budget?
Yes, that's a fair description.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, could you give an overview about the Windsor Road expenses that are being moved to fiscal year 2019?
Yeah, so...
I thought that we weren't necessarily settled on the outcome of the...
Yes, that...
Quality of the road, and so, this amount of money is what?
This is all the remaining money that was originally budgeted in the project, and whatever direction we go from here, this will be used to pay costs associated with that project.
Okay, so it's sort of being held on the shelf until needed next year?
All right, any other questions? Nope? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion moves forward. Thank you very much. With no further business before this committee, I move adjournment.